Hey Bob, FYI, for Broderick, we're gonna change the mic to the pastor.
Oh, yeah, I'm just having a place. Have we received?
We just do our normal stuff, and then I'm calling.
So there's more chairs up here?
No, just take yours. Oh, they already have their new seating. Here's the new seating chart. Yeah, we stay in our seats. Hey, Broderick? You get, you're already up here, sir. No, sit anywhere. Yeah.
Cassandra, am I in this seat or my name is?
Good morning. We'll call the Wednesday, November 11th, 2020 City Council meeting to order and also recognize that it is Veterans Day. And so we appreciate all the veterans that may be in the room or listening. Thank you very much for your service to this country. And at this time, please join us for the invocation, the pledge. And the invocation will be David Lukinbach. Do you want to introduce him?
Yes, please. Father David Lukinbach is the rector for Christ Church Tyler. And we're honored to have you this morning, Father David.
Thank you, Bob. Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for the blessings of this life. We thank you for Tyler. We thank you for our nation. We thank you for freedom. We thank you, Lord, for our veterans and for their service to all of us. We thank you for this new council. We thank you, Lord, that they've all called. They've heard your call to serve our community and responded. We're so grateful for them. You tell us in your word that he who dwells in the shelter of the Most High will abide in the shadow of the Almighty. For you will deliver us from the deadly pestilence. And under your wings, we will find refuge. We pray that you would bless us. Bless us with wisdom. Bless this council with wisdom and vision and compassion. Help them to lead our community through these times of trial to a brighter, better future. We ask your blessing and anointing upon this council. And we ask it earnestly in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
............... One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we will move on to the election. Cassandra, you're gonna, good, you're gonna come up front today.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm coming before you requesting that the City Council consider canvassing returns of the City Council election held November 3rd, 2020, for the mayor-at-large and City Council members for single-member districts number 2, 4, and 6, and adopting an ordinance declaring the results. We do this because the City Council is required by law to canvass the returns and declare the results of the City Council election to elect a mayor-at-large and City Council members for single-member districts 2, 4, and 6, held on November 3rd, and adopting ordinance declaring the results. And whereas, on the 11th day of November, 2020, the City Council of the City of Tyler, Texas, at a meeting, called for the purpose of canvassing the returns of the City Council election held on the 3rd day of November, 2020, in the City of Tyler for the election of the mayor-at-large and the City Council members for districts 2, 4, and 6 for the City of Tyler, Texas, and it appearing as a result of such canvass that the following nine persons receive the following number votes for mayor-at-large and for City Council members districts 2 and 4 and 6. Mayor-at-large, we had Joel Rando at 9,955. Don Warren, we had 23,670. For City Council member district 2, we had Broderick McGee, 3,105. Derek Bondurant at 962. City Council member district 4, we had James Nguyen at 2,0216. Nick Pacina at 2,00113. And for City Council member district 6, Brad Curtis at 7,00984. So I'm asking you to, at this time, canvass those returns and approve this ordinance declaring the results.
Great. We just have to vote to approve it, is that correct? Any questions or comments?
Move to approve E1.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I want to say congratulations to all the winners. Y'all will do an excellent job moving this community forward. And I'm really proud that each of y'all decided to run for office. It's a, it's a time commitment, but it's not, it's just well worth the commitment that you make to this community. It will, it will bring happiness to your heart that you're serving your community. So we're very proud that y'all decided to do it. Thank you. So at this time, you're, we're gonna, no, you do it. You're in charge. Look, I'm in charge for like another minute, but. But go ahead.
Okay, so at this time, we would like to request that a certificate of election and the oath of office be administered to the newly-elected mayor-at-large, which is Councilman, or the mayor, Don Warren. He will come to the front.
Cheryl, you want to stand by? Why don't you, I've got, I've got this. I'll let him stand next to me. You stand next to me. Oh, you can do it. That'll work. Right here. Oh, no, that's right. That's backwards. Why don't we switch around? All right, are you ready?
Ready.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Don Warren. Oh, yes. In the name. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Don Warren.
I, Don Warren.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
City of Tyler, City Council for district, for mayor-at-large.
For the City Council, mayor-at-large.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state.
Of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. That's hilarious. Congratulations.
All right, and at this time, requesting a certificate of election and the oath of office be administered to the re-elected City Council member for district 2, Broderick McGee.
Pastor Curry.
This gives me great honor to do this. Broderick McGee is not only my friend, but he is my brother-in-law. I am extremely excited to do this for a well-deserving young man. Repeat after me, please. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Broderick McGee.
I, Broderick McGee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of City of Tyler City Council member for district 2.
Break that up, son.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of City of Tyler City Council member.
City of Tyler Council member.
For district 2.
For district 2.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Amen.
Amen.
Here you go, Broderick. Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, requesting a certificate of election and oath of office be administered to the newly-elected City Council member for district 4 and district 6. So if we could have James Nguyen come up for the oath.
About the third or fourth time we're gonna have a lot. All right, in the name and by the authority.
In the name and by the authority.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
I, James Nguyen.
I, James Nguyen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of City of Tyler City Council member.
Of City of Tyler City Council member.
For district 4.
For district 4.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations. You're official now. You ready? You're up. All right, in the name and by the authority.
In the name and by the authority.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
I, Brad Curtis.
I, Brad Curtis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the City of Tyler.
Of the City of Tyler.
City Council member for district 6.
City Council member for district 6.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Brad, James, will y'all come on up? We're gonna switch around a little bit. Got a new seating chart.
Okay.
Congratulations to Walter.
Where am I?
Right here.
You're going where Bob is.
Okay.
And Brad, you're going where McGee was. Sellers is right here. Thank you.
Am I moving?
Shirley, you're next to Brad.
Welcome.
It's toys.
Don, this one?
Yes. We good to go? We're gonna go to E5 first, and then we're gonna pause before we get into the rest of the meeting. The, the next item is requesting the City Council to consider electing a mayor pro tem. And as is customary, the person with the most tenure steps up and becomes the next mayor pro tem. So if I can have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we elect Broderick McGee as the next mayor pro tem.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Broderick McGee to be the next mayor pro tem. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Broderick. And before we get into the guts of the meeting, I just want to, first of all, congratulate everybody that's up here. It's been a long ordeal. It was long anyway, but with the six-month deal with COVID and all that, it's just been, it's been hard on everybody. And just thank you for everybody's perseverance, and I'm glad we're here where we are today. I want to thank everybody that has supported me for all these years, especially my wife for, for listening to me talk about the city for six years, seven years, and now she's gonna have to hear me talk about it more. So, and tomorrow's our anniversary, so happy anniversary. Twenty-six, twenty-six years. But in reality, you know, this, this whole deal up here is about more than each of us individually. It's about our community and serving a city that we love and respect. So we, we hope that we can do things that make everybody proud and that the decisions that we make are, are led by, by the Lord and that we, we serve Him and we serve the community. And we're gonna do our best to make everybody proud. And just thank you for, for your support. Now, you're more than free to make a comment if you like Brad and James, the new guys.
Yeah, just, just happy to be here, ready to get started.
Okay.
I concur with Brad.
Okay, we're gonna get into the meeting, but I would like just to pause. For anybody that is, you can watch Government in Action if you wish, or you can leave and go about your, your duties. Then we'll start. Bye. Happy anniversary. Yeah.
Linda, how do I get the?
All right, Z1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This applicant is requesting a zone change to allow for multifamily development. To the east and to the south is, is zoned RPO, Restricted Professional Office. The south is undeveloped, and the east is a mixture of office and undeveloped land. Okay, and this request, as you can see on the future land use map, would amend the future land use from office to multifamily. And, and if you notice, the multifamily is in the orange color is RMF. The applicant plans to combine the property to the north for a multifamily development, and the maximum density would be 24 units per acre. A type A buffer yard would be required between the planned unit residential and the RMF, the multifamily. There was opposition at 5.96%. The opposition was concerned about drainage, noise, and traffic in the area. They were also concerned about the decrease in, or a possible decrease in property values and that it would be inconsistent with the character of the established community. Drainage will be addressed at the development phase, and there is multifamily zoning in the area, as I mentioned before. There were five notices sent out, two were turned in favor, two in opposition, and the Planning and Zoning Commission by a 6-0 vote recommends approval.
The, the people that are opposed to this, are they here today?
I'm not sure that they're here today. They were at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay. I've got two cards here. John Nixon, Phil Burks. Are y'all both here just for questions, or you wanna talk, John?
Questions, it's you.
Okay. I watched this on the Planning and Zoning, and I saw the one person that had made comments regarding lighting and all that. So I assume that's all been kind of worked out?
Yes, the lighting is, is something that is addressed in the Unified Development Code, the UDC. And that was all resolved during the meeting, and it will be adhered to during the development process.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve E1.
Second. Got a motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project.
This is an application for Christus Trendy Mother Francis, and they're requesting a zone change to allow for additional parking for the medical campus. To the north is zoned RPO for office. To the east is R1B and RPO. There's single-family homes and undeveloped land in that area. And to the south and to the west is zoned institutional and is currently the location of parking and Christus Trendy Mother Francis. This request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide that identifies this area as institutional. The applicant plans to construct parking lots to serve the, their campus. The request is consistent also with the Midtown Area Development Plan, and it recommends supporting expansion areas for medical campuses as well as TJC. Of the 13 notices mailed, zero returned in favor and zero in opposition. And with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends this at a 6-0 vote.
Any questions of Heather? Have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Sellers, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. P1, George Roberts.
Good morning.
Good morning, George.
First, I'm George Roberts with the Northeast Texas Public Health District, and I'm joined by our Smith County Health Authority, Dr. Paul McGahey. Congratulations, Mayor Warren and Councilman Curtis, Councilman McGee, Councilman Nguyen. Congratulations on this, and look forward to working with y'all in the days to come. So my role today is to give you an update on COVID-19, where we stand in our community, and answer any questions that you might have. So with that, we're gonna start off our dashboard there. You see, up there on the top, we see that as of yesterday, November 10th, 2020, we have a total of 7,607 COVID-19 cases in Smith County. Of these, 4,975 are confirmed cases of COVID-19, and 2,632 are probable cases. Our recovered patient count is now 4,639, including both confirmed and probable cases. Again, to remind you, what's the difference between a confirmed and a probable case? It's basically the type of lab testing that they had. A confirmed test is what we had initially. Those are what's called PCR tests. They're done through a lab. The probable cases are what's called antigen tests. Those are the rapid tests. And what they found on the rapid test is that when they click positive, there's a high probability they are positive. The issue is when they're negative, there's, there's some question if they're really negative or not. So that's why we're counting both of those. We're combining those now, but we separate those on our dashboard like that. You also see on there, you can see for the cases as well as the deaths, and we broke that down by city. And those of you who've been on the council for a while, and Senate Manager Bressard, and Mayor Hines and others, saw the whole evolution of this whole dashboard. It came, it took, it took several months to kind of get all this together like this. So that's where we are right now. We also have, we keep a count every day. We know every day how many COVID-19 patients are in our hospitals. So as of yesterday, there were 155 East Texas citizens, East Texans, who were in Tyler, Texas hospitals for COVID-19, either positive or suspect. We've also had 97 of our Smith County residents who have passed away from COVID-19. So we're now almost eight months into this journey. As we have, we first announced our first three cases of COVID-19 in this room on Friday, March 13th. Where are we now? Well, unfortunately, the virus is still with us. And so we must continue to take these following measures in the days ahead if we're going to be successful. Number one, we encourage everybody to stay home when you're sick. Second, avoid large crowds and large gatherings. Second, avoid large crowds and large gatherings. Third, the social distancing thing that we've, we didn't hear about that eight months ago, we've heard about it, you know, every day since that point. Stay six feet away from each other. Decrease the number of places that you go out and about. Wear a mask when you're out in public and basically that's to protect others from you. Wash your hands often for 20 seconds. Cover your cough or sneeze, clean and disinfect the surfaces, keep your hands off your face, your eyes, your nose and the mouth. And right now, get a flu shot. I'm not going to ask for a show of hands of whom y'all got a flu shot, but if you haven't got your flu shot yet, we can take care of you at the Northeast Texas Public Health District or there's many, many places around town where we can take care of you. So please get that because we don't want to see the combination of flu and COVID-19. I got my flu shot on October 5th and my, my staff reports to me that we're just under 13, we've given just under 1,300 shots ourselves at the Northeast Texas Public Health District. So again, the measures that I've talked about are crucial to protect older adults and persons with underlying medical conditions who are at risk for a more difficult struggle with COVID-19 than our healthier population. So now I'm going to go into the charts and graphs. So this is the time for those of you, new council members, you've seen these charts and graphs up here. So the first thing I'm going to show is our, you go back to that other one just before the Jennifer, there we go. This is our COVID-19 daily new cases in our seven county, oh, I'm sorry, net health, seven-day rolling rates of COVID-19 per county. So this graph here looks at the seven-day average of new daily positive cases of infection per 100,000 population. So again, we're looking at, so what we're showing up there right now, we have a rolling rate averaged over the last seven days of 45.48 per 100,000 of our citizens in Smith County have, have been tested positive for COVID-19. As a comparison, when I reported this body on October 14th, that last number was 25.29. So our cases, you know, you've heard the uptick in the cases, we are doing that right now. And I'll talk just a tad more about this deal here in just a second. So at this point, our positive case count, our great deal higher and we're moving into a more substantial and dangerous level of community spread in our community. As I mentioned before, the rolling rate, this is what we're showing up here is one of the best ways to closely monitor whether this is a trend over time unfolding and increasing, decreasing, and flattening, or so on. So we started displaying this graph on our websites in early October. And as we developed this guidance, our guidance in the chart states that this graphic is only intended to provide situational awareness for organizations and entities, not as a sole indicator for decision-making in determining community spread or the safety of a specific organization, entity, or geographic mix. So we provide three levels of guidance on there. You see the yellow, which is the minimal spread, zero to 10 per 100,000, our moderate, which is 10 to 35, and the substantial. So you see, this is the first time I've come to you with a substantial spread. So we're now in the red zone right now. And again, we're at 46.48 per 100,000, which means that we as a community, you know, the steps I talked about already, we need to pay attention to those, it really is paramount on us because, again, we don't have a vaccine yet. Dr. McGahey's going to give you a little bit of an update on that. We don't have a vaccine yet, we do have some therapeutic treatments, but the best way that we can take care of that are those public health measures that we've talked about just a few minutes ago. Next slide. So this is what's called a spatial distribution of COVID-19 cases. So this one is, represents the 497 cases over our seven-county region and shows the areas of community spread there. So you see the kind of a zip code, where were the cases in Smith County, where are the cases in like Greg County and our other counties? And we, and for, for James and Brad, we also, we serve six other counties besides Smith County for public health emergency preparedness and disease surveillance. So you'll hear me talk a lot about our seven-county area and that's what you see, the seven-county up there, you see what that is. Next slide. Is our Smith, this is our Smith County COVID-19 cumulative case count forecast as of November 8th. So you can see the, the potential for uptick of cases there. You see that we have kind of a, our, our lines there, okay, this is, you know, kind of the, the larger, the, the higher number there is kind of worst-case scenario, you have mid-grade and lower grade. So, you know, we're on track potentially to add, you know, another 8,000 cases by the end of, end of the year. So again, that's, is that going to happen? I don't know, but that's, this is our trend line right now. Next slide. This is our East Texas number of COVID-19 positive and suspect hospitalized patients. Again, last Friday when the graph was developed, it was 160, yesterday it was 155. So you kind of see the trending there, it was, you know, low for a while, then kind of brought back up, so you kind of see the trend line is ticking up. We've been running, seem like about 140 to 160 now for the last few weeks. Next slide. This is our net health COVID-19 daily new cases in our seven-county jurisdiction and you see kind of the spikes there. Remember when it, remember when it, we had a big spike there in July? See, look what's happening right now, we're starting to see that spike happen again. So again, that's a cause for caution here. Next slide. This is our net health COVID-19 combined racial, in our seven counties, the racial/ethnic distribution. And what we tried to say, what's interesting about this is, you know, two pieces, we don't always know the race or ethnicity of all the patients who test positive. We only get that through a lab result. So this is, this is not 100% complete, but it gives you a, but, but we, what we do have, this is what we, we know. So roughly, you know, 54.9% of the, of the positive cases are white, just under, just a little over 18% are African-American, 26.7% are Hispanic, and then the Native American, Asian, others kind of weigh in just under 1%. Next slide. This is the Smith County combined, this is for the racial/ethnic in, in Smith County. A little less in the white population in Smith County, higher in the Hispanic, about the same in the African-American population. Next slide. This is our net health age distribution here. And so this is, you know, one of the things I've been talking to y'all about has been the 21 to 30 crowd was the biggest crowd. Look at that graph though, it really is starting to, in our seven-county area, the, the 21 to 30 crowd is still the highest group, but then you see the 31 to 40, the 41 to 50, 51 to 60, and the 11 to 20 age group are starting to kind of catch up with the 21 to 30. So interesting little trend here that we've just kind of starting to notice. And on the next slide, you'll actually see that the 11 to 20 crowd has actually surpassed the 21 to 30 crowd in, in Smith County. So look, but look at that, I mean, it's still right there together on, on the graph. Next slide. This is the net health COVID-19 gender breakdown by county. You know, you've heard a lot of cases that the, there are more men than women that are testing positive, but in our sound, that seven-county area, it's just the opposite. Significant more, particularly in Smith County and Greg County and really Henderson County, significant more women than men are testing positive. Next slide. This is the, this is the interesting slide, we came up with this a couple of months ago to kind of show where the, with the school-age kids, where is the, where are the numbers? And obviously, we were very interested in this as we started back to school. If you look there, again, this is in our, our whole net health region, look at the smaller numbers of pre-K, K through 5, 6 through 8, but then look where it really starts to pop up there, 9 through 12th and then college age group. So it just seems like kind of goes back to the, and I'll talk a little bit about schools, but you know, we've been very fortunate, our schools so far. Next slide. This kind of breaks it down, that same slide breaks it down by ethnicity, race and ethnic. You see there in the pre-K, the K through 5, and the 6 through 8, a tad more Hispanic, more Hispanics are testing positive than the other racial groups. The white group is testing more positive more frequently in the 9 through 12th and the same thing college plus. Next slide. Deaths, obviously, we're very concerned about deaths, but here in our seven-county area, 206 of the deaths are from white individuals, one Native American, 23 Hispanic, and 48 African-American. Next slide. This is the age distribution of the deaths there, we did kind of a bubble chart, have a very smart epidemiologist that puts all these things together for us. But look at the bubble charts there, obviously you can see the ages of people dying, you know, very, not very many younger people are dying from this. It seems like it's typically older people, you kind of see the trend maybe starting at 55 to 60, but then you look forward to the, as the older, as people are older. Next slide. Then I want to ask Dr. McGahey to come up, he's going to talk to you a few minutes about the thing called herd immunity, you've heard a lot about herd immunity, as well as vaccine. So Dr. McGahey?
Thank you, George. Thank you, George, good morning and congratulations to you, Mayor, and new council members. We appreciate your service. I'm Paul McGahey, I'm the health authority here and wanted to briefly talk about a couple of concepts. One is herd immunity. The second is on, about the vaccine that we've been hearing a lot about, especially this week. But if you look at that chart on, on the screen there, herd immunity is obviously an agricultural term and if you look at this individual in the middle, say that individual was infected with COVID-19 and they encountered 10 persons around them, on average, if that person spread it to two individuals, where there's no protection in that circle, they can spread it to two individuals, those two individuals can spread it to two more, two more, two more. So before you know it, you have an epidemic, or in this case, a pandemic. If you look at the next slide, what if we create a protective ring around that individual? Say in, in this particular slide on the left, five people are immune either from receiving a vaccine or from having the natural infection, they've developed antibodies. You can see how there are fewer pathways for that, that infection to spread. In this case, only one person becomes infected. Well, what if you had seven people around that circle who were immune from having the illness or from having the vaccine? That would be called herd immunity. If we think in public health and leading public health officials think if we can create a condition where 70% of the people either had the disease plus those who are vaccinated, in essence, you protect the whole community. By definition, herd immunity occurs when a large portion of the community becomes immune to a disease, making the spread of disease from person to person very unlikely. As a result, the whole community becomes protected, not just those who are immune. So we are wanting to reach this status. Well, can we get to that 70% just by disease alone and not infection? Yes, we could, it would take months and the devastation would be significant from the illness, from the expansive hospitalizations, et cetera. So we don't want to go that way. We don't want herd immunity to occur from 70% of the population, 200 million in the United States becoming ill. We want that to happen from, from vaccination. And speaking of vaccination, you heard a lot of news this week about the Pfizer vaccine, how it's been 90% effective in a, in a few people, about 94 to be exact. That's, that's great news. We're cautiously optimistic on that news, that it is one of six vaccines that have received funding from the federal government to be pushed out to communities. So there is, there is hope embedded in all these numbers that show rates going up, you read the, you know, the news minute by minute, all the situations in Utah and North Dakota and other places. But there is hope for a vaccine coming. Now, when will it come? Probably after the first year, maybe initial doses will be coming this way at the end of December. They will be flagged or targeted for healthcare workers in the state of Texas, Department of State Health Services is developing phases or priority populations to, that can receive that vaccine and namely, they will be healthcare providers on our front lines, deservedly so, and then people with high-risk conditions. You'll be hearing a lot more about who will be targeted for those early vaccines. Now, when will it come in larger quantities? I think Dr. Fauci and others said maybe by April, it's going to be several months. But as a consequence, the Department of State Health Services is now registering shot givers or administrators throughout the state of Texas right now, and many have already registered to start receiving that vaccine. And some of the vaccines require two doses. The Pfizer vaccine requires a dose on day zero and then day 21, so there, and it requires ultra-cold frozen temperatures, minus 70 degrees Celsius. So there are some, a lot of implications to that and strategy sessions going on about how to get that vaccine out. But I'm confident that it will be, when it comes, we'll be figuring out a plan with net health, Mr. Roberts and his excellent team, of how we can distribute it in our local community fairly and wisely. On to the next slide, but until then, I'll just reiterate what George has been saying and I'm not going to go over all of these, just the basics, the fundamentals of blocking and tackling, you know, we keep harping on that. But it's so important, another study came out from CDC just today or yesterday, I know the epidemiologist from George's shop sent it to me, that masking works and some validity to that, to that situation of masking and how it works. But it's so important as we go into the Thanksgiving season, instead of going to my family gathering, which has about 60 or 70 people, we're going to hold back and stay home, just with our immediate family. So we need to continue to stay home if we're sick, avoiding large crowds, getting colder, so we're in less ventilated airspace now, be careful with that, decrease the number of places that you go out and about, wash hands, wear a mask, continue with those fundamentals. We're inching forward to that vaccine and I do believe there's a lot of hope in that. I, I'm confident that the vaccine will be safe and effective, still a lot to learn about that, but we're anxiously awaiting when that presents to our community. Thank you.
Dr. McGahey, before you leave, I read yesterday that Galveston is either, they're getting some of the Pfizer vaccine, is that part of the test or is that, obviously, it's not a rollout?
It may be, I think they may be participating in some of the clinical trials, I'd have to validate that to know for sure, they're in the phase three or the last trials of the, the situation. So that could be it. I don't know of anyone who has received the vaccine because it has not been licensed officially yet, so it must be through a trial situation.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Dr. McGahey.
Thank you.
George, I got a question.
Sure.
When you, when you mentioned the 155 people that are in the hospitals, is that pushing the hospitals? How are they doing? Are they...
Sure, that's a good question. So the hospitals, we have had, through our EOC, we've contained, continued a pretty close communication with those guys, they have done a great job, they are surging to meet the demands. They, the, the state has provided them with some extra resources in terms of nurses and their respiratory therapists to help with that. So when we visited with the hospitals several days ago, they all felt good about where they were. But, you know, again, those things can change, but at this moment, they're, they're, they're doing, they're doing well.
Okay. The, the trend line you were showing earlier, if you compare Tyler to other cities similar to ours, population-wise, are we on track with other cities?
Yeah, a lot of people, you know, as you've heard, I'm sure you've heard, El Paso has been, has been hit with a pretty, pretty difficult surge out there, their hospitals are over 100% capacity. Amarillo, the Panhandle has some real difficult situations out there. So we're actually, I think we're doing reasonably well, but we, we see what's happening in other areas of the country, so we basically are throwing up the flag that, hey, we need to, this, this trend, the, the, the cases are going up, so we need to pay closer attention to it at this point.
Do y'all have any questions for...
Yeah, George, on the hospitalizations, do, do you have a number that, that would be your, I mean, obviously, 155 is a lot, but is there a number where you, a red line number?
Yeah, we talked to the hospitals, we, so every day, the hospitals give us a dashboard about, they, they tell us how many COVID patients are in there, but they also tell us what their capacity is. And so I'm seeing, we're seeing on a daily basis what they're, how many people do they totally have in the hospital? So the, the red line mark, we, I know the state before, potentially some other, the governor's order would come in, if our 19 county, there's a 19-county area that we're in our regional advisory council, that includes the seven counties that I work with along with some other ones. But if that average rate, if it goes over 15% of the patients in the hospital are COVID-positive or suspect, that would potentially, for over a seven-day period, that could potentially kick in some of the governor's orders for some more restrictions.
Okay. Do you, do you know what that, is that a firm number here or does it change?
That number, I think we're about 11, 12% for our area.
I was, I was saying it was over 15 two days ago.
Two days ago, okay.
And, and George, you know, that's not just, that's restrictions on the hospitals and this.
Right, correct.
So the veterans have to go back down to their capacity.
Right. And again, that's a 19-county area, so that would include, you know, up to Sulphur Springs, that area, and, and places like that. So yes, that is, that's something we, we are watching. Obviously paying very close attention to our little market here, but...
George, you might bring them on, the rack, the additional nurses as well, because of the question about the hospitals and then, you know...
Yeah, that's been one of the things, so... Yeah, we, we worried about, you know, in terms of how the hospitals were doing, if they, space-wise, we were concerned about that very early on and we looked at alternate care sites and things like that. And the hospitals came back to us and said, really back in July is when this thing really started to spike, they basically said, hey, we can surge, our, our limiting factor is our staff. And so the staffing, having the, the state providing some extra staffing has been a home run for the hospitals. That, that has really helped them get through. So as long as they can have the extra staffing and the, and, you know, when we visited with the hospitals, actually, the rack, our representative for the rack was on there, the rack is committed to continue working with the state on that. So there seems to be some pretty positive state response to making sure that we continue to have more nurses and I think we're actually potentially getting some more, so...
George, you mentioned the counties. I noticed that during the primary, we had positive cases in our election office and then we also have it in the general election right now. Can you address that? Are we following and complying with these rules that you presented that we should be following?
Councilman, as far as I know, you, you were, you know, I'm not, I don't know the exact circumstances of each one of those things, but again, this is a, this is a sneaky virus, so again, that's the whole thing, when you get out in crowds and things like that or in larger... in larger areas, or even in your smaller area, if somebody has it, then they can potentially spread it. But I'm not real well-versed on all the details of that particular situation. Matter of fact, I saw it first thing, I heard about it the other day and I saw it on the front page of the paper this morning. I'll add a couple other things here and then take some more questions if that's okay. I just want to get just a couple comments about contact tracing. You know, we continue our efforts with contact tracing. It's important that people understand what action they need to take if they are COVID-19 positive and also alert their contacts. The community at large now has a better understanding of what it means to contact trace, and in most cases, they take it upon themselves to contact their close contacts whenever they themselves test positive. Our staff within Northeast Texas Public Health District has also worked with area businesses, manufacturers, schools and government entities to train appropriate staff on how to do their own contact tracing. And we have staff dedicated to contact tracing, but we also had assistance from the Texas Workforce Commission, the Smith County Medical Society, UT School of Pharmacy, and we really appreciate their efforts. Contact tracing is an essential piece of this effort to talk to people, encourage them to self-isolate and not spread the virus. Couple other things here, testing. Local providers have access to testing, but they require that you have symptoms of COVID-19. And again, reiterate the symptoms as well. Fever and chills, cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, newly acquired loss of taste or smell, loss of appetite, sore throat, nasal congestions, runny nose, diarrhea, vomiting, nausea. So a lot of things that can mask itself as something else other than COVID-19, or you may think you have COVID-19 and you have maybe a flu case, or maybe you have a common cold in East Texas or good old East Texas allergies. On November 9th, Texas Department of Emergency Management set up a free test site at the Tyler Senior Center, 1915 Garden Valley Road. And I understand on the first day, I think they saw like 283 people over there. It's open Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 4:00. We appreciate the city allowing that space to be available. And we also thank St. Louis Baptist Church, most recently, and Reverend Carraway for hosting our free testing site in the month of October. We've done a hospital update, so I won't repeat that. School update, our school started in October, the week of October 17th. My staff and I have had numerous conversations with the schools, and the schools report their COVID-19 cases to us on a daily basis along with any contacts that are being sent home to self-isolate. The schools are also required to submit weekly reports directly to the Texas Education Association, or TEA, on the number of positive COVID-19 cases as well as the number of contacts. This information is now available on the TEA website by ISD and by age group. So in closing, I applaud our community, parents, teachers, school staff, students, for all the preparations as well as their actions to date that have been made to get the kids back to learning. And again, thank you, City of Tyler. New Mayor Warren, he's now part of the EOC, Mayor Hines for his time he spent there, Mr. Bressard, Chief Kobel, Chief Toler, Fire Captain Hal Walker, Jenny Wells and Julie Giggane, who has spent countless hours in the emergency operations center meetings along with the added phone calls, texts and emails. And there have been numerous other city employees in the fire and police department that have given their time and energy to this effort as well. And again, a special shout-out to my staff in the Northeast Texas Public Health District, who've worked tirelessly during this effort. They've been here not only for the disease surveillance, but also for our WIC clients, environmental health, our laboratory, TB, immunizations, vital stats and Center for Healthy Living. And with that, I'll conclude my comments and take any other questions from either myself or Dr. McGahay.
Any other questions for anyone? Well, thank you for what you do. It's been a long six months.
Eight months.
Eight months. But I forget, but just thank you for what you do, you've been for keeping us updated and keeping us safe.
Thank you, and thank you all for, we really appreciate the support of the city. Sidney County have been just tremendous partners in this whole thing. And our experience here, I've talked to my peers around the country, you know, pretty often, and we've had a really good experience here, so thank you. I think that the community has done a very good job, but we need to continue working hard at this thing because we're, unfortunately, we're not through this thing yet, so let's don't get COVID fatigue quite yet.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Stephanie, R1.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
It's so wonderful to see a full dais. Congratulations, everybody, we made it. I'm here to present a pretty simple item this morning. This is a request for a resolution of support for a Texas Parks and Wildlife grant. And, you know, we're always looking for funding partners, and whenever that becomes available, we always look to make applications. And this is basically a grant application. With Texas Parks and Wildlife, it's $1.5 million grant, 50% would be the city's match, which is $750,000. You know, looking to push forward the Rose complex over the next year. This is an opportunity for us to help pay for the green space that would be out front at the facility. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We'll look to hear back from Parks and Wildlife after the submittal in March. They usually will give us a thumbs up or thumbs down. And you have three years to spend the funds, so I think that that's an adequate amount of time through this process. But other than that, we just recommend that the council approve the resolution of support.
If I don't like a motion? Pardon?
Move to a free bar line.
Got a motion by Sellers, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, a resolution carries. Thank you. Ed?
M1.
Mayor Warren and counsel, it's our pleasure to bring before you today. It's something that, an item that began actually under former Councilman Ed Moore and continued under current Councilman Shirley McKeller, which is a discussion of, conversation we've been continuing with Empowerment Community Development Corporation in the use of former Fire Station Number Four on MLK Drive. One of the things that the City of Tyler has done in the past, multiple different ways, has been as we move fire stations, which is something that is done relatively routinely over your century and a half of existence, then the use of that fires, the former fire station for some public purpose beyond just the life that it had as an abandoned structure. You currently, you did this just a few months ago with Smith County for the sale of Fire Station Number One downtown to Smith County for their use along with the jail. And with this one, the Empowerment Community Development Corporation, as they learned that we were going to be vacating former Fire Station Number Four a few years ago, came to us and asked us about the use of that property for the Texas African-American Museum and locating and being able to use that structure to create that facility and that purpose. State law does allow for you to be able to transfer property of the city to nonprofits provided that the land or interest will be used by the nonprofit organization to carry out a public purpose that primarily benefits the city, such as the museum. The donation is made under terms that affect and maintain the public purpose, and the title and right of possession of the land or interest revert to the city if the receiving nonprofit organization ceases to use the land or interest in carrying out the public purpose. And so with this, we are recommending that the city gift fires, former Fire Station Number Four at 309 West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard to the Empowerment Community Development Corporation for the purpose of operating the Texas African-American Museum. And with that, then also for the city manager to be able to execute all agreements necessary to accomplish the donation.
Thank you, Ed. We've got two cards up here. Ms. Washington, would you like to come up and speak?
Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Can you state your name and address just for the record?
I'm Gloria Washington.
I need your address.
My address is 1314 South Lyons Avenue here in Tyler, Texas. But our address that we're going to be working from is 309 West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Thank you all so very much. In God we trust. In God we trust. Thank you, City Council of Tyler, Texas. All of our newly appointed city council members, I know this is a memorial bidet for all of you all, as well as for the Empowerment Community Development Corporation and the Texas African-American Museum, as well as Veterans Day. Thanks for your service for all of the veterans that we have here today. Thanks to the city council, our members, our new mayor, our past mayor. Thank you all so much. We thank Mr. Ed Moore, who's not here today, Mr. Ed Bresson. We thank you, Ms. Jennifer Pittman. We thank you all so much for the time that you all spent with us in trying to get this worked out. To the residents of North Tyler area, citizens and friends, our volunteers and supporters, we thank you all for entrusting this property to our organization. And we appreciate this day. And we thank you all so very much for your consideration. And we promise, I make this promise, that we will continue to make the fire station, past fire station on MLK, one of the best facilities in the North Tyler area, as well as for the City of Tyler. Thank you all once again, and you all have a blessed day.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Stanley Kofler, you want to come up? If you can state just name and address for the record?
Stanley Kofler, what's my address? 1388 Canal Road 220, Tyler, Texas 75707. Gloria said everything that I could say. I just want to thank you guys for entrusting us with this opportunity to recognize and preserve African-American history, which is very important, which also lines up with Tyler 21, to preserve history, in particular in the North Tyler area. And that's what we endeavor to continue to do, is preserve the history of those who have gone before us, not just in Tyler, but regionally and nationally, and to honor and recognize those who are yet alive. For we do believe that give people their flowers while they're living. And so often, sometimes we don't do that, but we endeavor to continue what we've been doing over the last five years, preserving history for African-Americans. Thank you and God bless.
So Stanley, let me ask you, where is the museum now? I visited, isn't it at a school?
It's at Mamet Griffin. At the Mamet Griffin.
This will be quite a move.
Yeah. And before that, we were at the old Christmas store, Owen, in a small area, so.
Cool. Great job.
Mayor, I would like to piggyback onto what Ms. Washington and Mr. Kofler said, that I thank Mr. Ed Moore for the initiative that he started in making sure that this happened, and for the council and you, the mayor, and our prior mayor, Hines, for continuing this project. Thank you so much. That happens to be in my district, and I appreciate it.
So I guess that's your motion.
Yes. And so with that being said, I offer that motion that we accept at M1.
All right. Second, got a motion by McKeller, a second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, guys. Amber, M2.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, counsel. So today I bring to you a slight amendment to our already in action street closure amendment, a street closure application for the downtown area. Through our process of COVID and closing down, we got some feedback, and we wanted to make sure that we clarified the language to meet the intent of the original application. So in here, we have a small amendment that for events that are up to 300 in attendance normally cannot close streets. Let me take my mask off, I'm sorry, I'm so used of it. It's like a piece of me now. So events that do have more than 300 attendees normally cannot close streets that are directly adjacent to the square. So what our clarifying language will be is that they still cannot close the streets adjacent to the square, but the streets in D-back other than Irwin, Ferguson, Broadway, Spring or College with minimal business or traffic impact may be considered. And this comes to feedback from our community, such as a foundry coffee place that is doing a small closure, Codwell Arts Academy that does a small closure, things like that that do not truly impact the businesses that are in downtown or the traffic flow. And so from this, we know that a lot of these events are still trying to maintain the distance and social regulations through COVID. And so we do not want to hinder any additional businesses getting patrons coming there. And another small amendment that we have was just a clarification. We, in March, when we approved this application, it was a recommendation that if you're in the downtown area, you get a discounted rate of closing the street to further promote your business. And we had just left off that in a little chart in the application, so this is just to add it in the chart, but not asking for it as it was already approved in the spring. So we request that the council take these amendments and update our application so we can have it out for our public to continue their events.
Any questions of Amber? Are you going to get any pushback from anybody? Or if you do, who would it be from?
So with this, it's mainly the pushback that I get, not necessarily the pushback, but comments that I get back is for those that are directly on the square, because one closure does have a large impact of traffic flow. And so with these, and we do have it in that may be considered, so if it is an out street that is mainly blocking a lot of traffic, they still are required to send out the notices. And so I filter in there. So mainly, the concern was the businesses right adjacent to the square, so I think this will be okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve M2.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Appreciate it, y'all have a good day.
Thank you. M3? You don't look like Renissa.
Morning, Mayor and counsel. Renissa's out. I am Cameron Williams, the traffic engineer for the city. So here to present to you the change order number one for Martin Luther King Jr. Improvements. So a little background on the project, going back a year, in November of 2019, council approved the construction contract for this project. It includes sidewalks, ADA ramps, decorative lighting and pedestrian signals at North Palace and MLK Jr. So the limits of the project go from West Gentry over to North Broadway, and there's two components of this change order. We might go to the next picture, next slide, just to show you some more information, but the first component is some drainage improvements. So there are, if we would go to the next slide, to give you, thought we had some pictures. But, so there is some erosion occurring at this one location. It is on the north side, just west of Glenwood. There was no head wall installed originally, and so the pipes are being exposed, and it needs to be corrected. It's the bottom of the hill, there's a driveway there, and so we will install a head wall, fix the pipes in order for this sidewalk piece to get constructed correctly and permanently so we do not have this problem in the future. The second component are some signal, are signal improvements at MLK and North Palace. So there were already planned to do pedestrian signals at this intersection, but there are two damaged traffic signal poles. This is an older intersection, conduit's old, wiring is old. So we want to go ahead and completely replace this traffic signal, bring it in, bring it new. We want to go in there once, we don't want to come back five, 10 years from now, tear out sidewalk that we're installing when we can do it right now and do it right and improve the aesthetics. Also, we include, you know, new equipment as far as the traffic signal detection, which will greatly enhance the operations of that intersection, make it work better. And this fits into our intelligent transportation system master plan, what we want to accomplish there. So also, just as far as the duration, this project was planned to be wrapped up this November. We're extending that to March of 2021 for a couple of reasons. One is we still need some railroad coordination to finish some sidewalk, is the contractor has to have a permit in order to work within that right of way, and the railroad is pretty much shut down a lot and delayed things because of COVID. So that extends it out. Also, the ordering of traffic signal poles have a lead time, and so that's kind of that extension to March of 2021. Overall, just as a background for this project, with engineering, construction, this change order, it's a $2.3 million investment in this corridor for Martin Luther King Jr. And so with that, the staff recommendation is the council to authorize the city manager to approve change order number one to the construction contract for Martin Luther King Jr. Improvements Project in the amount of $247,677.46.
Thank you, Cameron. Any questions for Cameron?
One question. Will there be any form of a crosswalk, excuse me, a crosswalk for people coming out of the subdivision at Cecil and Martin Luther King? at Cecil and Martin Luther King?
I'm.
The crossover to the other side of the street.
Not aware of any. I would have to check on that, but I do not know the answer to that.
Is that a crosswalk across the railroad track?
Yeah, a lot of people that walk across Martin Luther King to come out of the subdivision where I live, from Cecil crossing over to Martin Luther King, to the other side of the street, going down to Glenwood.
Is that part of the quiet zone?
No.
No. Any other questions?
I'd just like to say thank you to Cameron, you're doing a great job, Cameron. He's responding to a couple of my texts immediately. And, uh, you know, we can't fix everything at once, but I hope the public can know that you are improving the city and you are improving the flow, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'm using your name a lot out in the public. As far as improving all the lights up and down Broadway and everywhere else, so.
I'm really impressed at how quickly he can respond, because on two occasions, he did that for me. And when I went through those lights, the next time, they were much better, Cameron, so, thank you. And I haven't shared your cell phone number with any of you.
Do you want to entertain a motion?
Second.
Motion by McKeller, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Russ, M four.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
This is a request for authorizing city manager to award RFP bid number twenty dash zero eight zero to Evergreen Skate Parks LLC out of Portland, Oregon, to furnish all the necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and labor in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand. And this will be the construction of Faulkner Park's Phase Two construction. Uh, back in February two thousand and nineteen, we, uh, approved, the council approved Phase One. Uh, we were given a plan of five different phases. Uh, we did not get to have a community meeting like we would typically done because of COVID, so we did bring in some people that were, that we know are key skaters of the park. Uh, though, and so we, to get input in, uh, developing this RFP into an actual, uh, model for you to look at. This is the original Phase One, and then this next step is how this one connects to the Phase One, uh, construction. It adds a li, little over ten thousand, ten thousand five hundred more square feet. And, uh, with the features that, uh, instead of having a swimming pool like we have at Noble Young, that we had a lot of issues, um, the, uh, aspect of how they were designed, how they're used. Uh, and so with this, this is what they call, uh, street skating. It's got a flow to it, uh, that is important to those that can do that. I'm not one of them, so I can't tell you that. But, uh, the, uh, this, the next slide will give you the overview of what it'll typically look like. Uh, the first, uh, design, as they were talking to us, kind of looked like Millennial Falcon a little bit. And Ed, I think Ed kind of liked that one, I wasn't sure. But, uh, this one is, uh, again, it does have a semblance of a, a swimming pool, but it's not. They're, they're a free flow, and it gives them, they're not as dangerous. The, the swimming pools at Noble have some very deep, steep, uh, aspects. A lot of people don't even use them. Uh, they probably, they'll sit along the side of it mostly, and that's about it. But there's, there's possibility that we're not here during the time, always watching what's going on. Uh, this, again, adds a fourteen, you can go to the next slide just to sum this project up. Phase One, uh, was a hundred and eighty for the construction portion of it. Uh, this one is three hundred and fifty, and total, uh, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars with, uh, fourteen thousand square foot, which is pretty close to what we have at Noble Young, which gives us that swap, that we, because we really wanted to demo Noble Young last time, but we only, we just didn't have the square footage that we would trade off. And this, this felt like a thing to do, is change that, go to, uh, get a more square footage, then we can go in and, and do the demo, and go, go into the next phase of plans with Noble Young Park, uh, get it revitalized, and get it, uh, we want to reforest it, do some things like that. And there's some other things, it just needs a lot of TLC out there. But this, again, um, if you have any questions, this is all I have to present with you on this next project.
So is this, I guess this finishes up the whole skateboard deal at Faulkner?
As far as Faulkner is concerned, we had a five phase, but really, uh, we've, we asked for public donations so that we could have some matching funds, and we really would like to, if we were to do it in the future, we would need the public to come forward to do, or if we could get some grants. And right now, the grants that are out there, if you get one, it's, it's not enough value to it to, uh, to, and then the, what you have to do doesn't add up to wanting to take the grant. And, uh, so we just like to, uh, we don't want to say, no, we're not going to add anymore, but there are so many other areas that need improvement, that that would be a while down the list from what I'm looking at.
Any other questions for Russ?
Uh, this is in my district, Russ, as you know, and we opened this. I wondered if the people would really use it, and I've been out there several times, and they really are using it. So I think this is going to be a great expansion for those people who are really dedicated to this sport. And even for those of us who can't do it, it's kind of fun to watch. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
I just want to add one comment before the motion's made. I, like Councilman Sellers, have been out to that park for several events. And I'll always walk over to the skate park to solicit comments and so on, and they are all extremely positive. And matter of fact, they, they made, several families made the decision to participate in baseball tournaments and softball tournaments and so on, uh, at that park specifically because the other half of their family stayed it. And so they said that we had the nicest skate park outside of Houston in the Dallas area, so. Thank you for your good work, and this expansion's going to be well, well received.
Thank you.
So is that a motion from Sellers?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion by Sellers, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Russ. M five, Renissa.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, and this is city manager, and congratulations to the reappointments and the new appointments, welcome to council. Um, before you today to discuss three items that are coming up, the next three items, which will require individual votes for each of those items. I'm pleased to say that I have Mr. Phil Burks here with Reynolds and Kay, as well as Brock Reelup from Land Corporation, um, to answer any in-depth questions that you may have about these projects. Um, the first project that we're going to discuss is a change order that is to take place on Robert E. Lee Drive. Um, there was a drainage improvement project that was initiated on Robert E. Lee Drive, um, due to flooding in the area. The engineers' review determined that the storm drain capacity was half the size that was needed. As, um, Reynolds and Kay went in to continue with the work or to improve the work, they discovered that we had a drain that ran along, um, Robert E. Lee. And that was approximately forty years old, and was made of cement, and had asbestos, and it was in brittle condition. The drain was not stable enough for us to be able to continue with the project with the drain being in place. So we had to replace the drain with PVC piping along that area. Um, we are anticipating that that change order is going to cost about twenty thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, and that the project will be complete within the next two to three weeks. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions of Renissa?
Move to approve M five.
Second.
Uh, motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Renissa, M six.
Yes, sir. This item is a drainage improvement project along Pabst and Bow. Um, we are initiating this project due to flooding in the area. The engineers' review of the storm drain that's currently there showed several compromises that needed immediate attention. Um, the project will replace a twenty-four inch line with the same size line along Pabst Street from Valentine to Bow. The project will include installing new curb inlets, as, along with junction boxes. Um, we had two bids, um, to come in, and Reynolds and Kay was the low bidder at three hundred seventy-four thousand, five ninety-seven fifty. The project is expected to last sixty working days, or approximately twelve weeks, depending upon weather. Um, and I'll entertain any questions that you may have regarding this project.
Where is this located?
At Pabst and Bow, that's going to be south of Gentry. Thank you, sir.
Is that over there by Church Under the Bridge? Is that where you drive through, and it's always holding a bunch of water?
It does hold a bunch of water. I'm trying to think of Church Under the Bridge as far as approximately, it's pretty close to Church Under the Bridge.
Because my car almost goes underwater at that intersection where it rains.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, it's close to there.
I got a short car.
You need a bigger car.
Ah, right. Any questions of Renissa? I've got a couple of cards here from Bob and Calvin Yarden here for just for questions.
There's any questions?
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, item number M seven is another drainage improvement project that's located in the Bottom Gap area near Jack Elementary School. This area has seen a myriad of issues since the development. Um, the current issue is, uh, street settlement, along with a compromise of the storm infrastructure. Um, there are some jointing that is off a little bit, and is causing sediment to go into the drunk, the drainage system and causing the settlement of the actual street. We went out for bid on August twen, I mean, I'm sorry, we received bids on October twenty seven. We received two bids, the low bidder was Reynolds and Kay again, in the amount of five hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. It is recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Reynolds and Kay in that amount. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Actually, I do need to give you one more piece of information. This project is also expected to last approximately sixty working days, or twelve weeks or so, depending upon weather.
Where'd you say this is?
It is in the Bottom Gap area near Jack Elementary School.
Okay. Any questions of Renissa?
Move to approve M seven.
Second.
Motion by Sellers, second by Win. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Reynolds and Kay. Tiffany, M eight.
Good morning. I am Tiffany Curry, Tyler Water Utilities Utilities Engineer. And I will present items M eight, M nine, and M ten to you. Paul Newhouse is here to answer any questions on the first two items. M two, M eight is, um, the closeout of the Eastern Seal package. This package is a part of Group One Consent Decree, and it includes two hundred and fifty-eight manholes, the cleaning, root removal, coating, um, with the geopolymer material in order to restore structural integrity to these manholes as a part of the consent decree. The contractor for this project was Southern Trenchless Solutions. The original contract amount was one million, eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. And we have finished the project at eight hundred and two thousand, four hundred, thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents, which is a twenty-one point two percent savings. The recommendation is that the city council authorize the city manager to approve a reconciliation change order that will decrease the contract amount by twenty-one point two percent, and the release of final retainage payment in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred, twenty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents to Southern Trenchless Solutions for the DPO two manhole rehabilitation Eastern Seal package.
Pretty impressive to save two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on a job. Don't say that very often.
Absolutely.
Uh, any questions for Tiffany?
What's the nature of that contract that we were able to save that? It's obviously not just a lump sum.
Absolutely. I will step aside and let Paul tell you exactly where those savings came in at.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Paul, Paul Newhouse, Environmental Compliance Engineer. There was a large contingency as part of that contract, and they only used a little bit of that. So that was a big chunk of it. Uh, there, in lieu of, without getting into all the details, they were going to vacuum test all these manholes, and that proved to be problematic. So they, we, instead of a one-year warranty, uh, we've got a five-year warranty on this work. And so that was a cost savings, a big, big part of it. And then they have like a lot of items in there for pavement repair that they didn't need. They were rehabbing manholes, and conservatively, we figured that they might disturb paving, and they really didn't disturb hardly any of it, so a lot of savings due to that.
So just work better and work smarter.
Basically. And we tried to be over, you know, overpromised, or underpromise, overdeliver kind of thing with our contingencies.
So we can expect to see things like this a lot in the future?
We hope so, but it, uh, I'm not going to promise that.
All right. Uh, any other questions?
Move we approve.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, uh, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M nine.
M nine is the closeout of the Western Seal package. This package is very similar to the Eastern Seal package. It included two hundred and twenty-four manholes, uh, same remedial measures, cleaning, re, root removal, um, basically trying to repair and reduce or stop the influence and filtration into those manholes with coating, um, and protecting them. The contractor for this project was Quadex Lining Systems. The original contract amount was nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. The final project amount was nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred, thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents, with a one percent savings. So not quite as good as the last one, but we still came in under budget. Um, and the request is that the city council authorize the city manager to approve a reconciliation change order that will decrease the contract amount by one point one percent and release the final retainage payment in the amount of forty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and ninety-six cents to Quadex Lining Systems for the DPO one manhole rehabilitation Western Seal package.
Any questions of Tiffany?
Move to approve M nine.
Got a motion by McGee, second from McKeller. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, M ten.
M ten is the, um, Consent Decree Creek Crossing Emergency Repairs. We have three creek crossings that have been repaired. Um, one of them, the Cumberland Road location, was actually actively leaking and was immediately repaired, that twenty-inch line. The other two locations were assessed and rated as E ratings, which means that, um, they're not leaking, but imminent failure could be imminent. So we deem those as needing emergency repairs as well. Those repairs have been completed, and the recommendation is that the city council approve one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, five hun, one hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents for the preventative and emergency creek crossing repair work related to wastewater line maintenance to be paid out of existing bond funds.
Any questions of Tiffany?
No, I move to approve M ten.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
M eleven.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members, how are you doing?
Morning, Rose.
Welcome, the new individuals. At, at this time, um, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Rose Ray, the HR manager with the Organizational Development Department. At this time, I would like to introduce to you the City of Tyler Benefit Consultant Lance Penley with McGriff to present item M eleven.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, congratulations, Mr. Protem, and new members of the city council. Uh, welcome. My name's Lance Penley McGriff, Employee Benefits Insurance Broker. I'm here, um, this time of the year, we renew, uh, our stop-loss insurance. We are a self-funded organization, so we cover claims on any one individual employees, pre-sixty-five retirees, spouses, children, up to the level of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in, uh, in claims. So what we have is we have reinsurance or insurance over and above that. We call that stop-loss insurance. Uh, please go to the next page. Um, we do, we procure stop-loss every year. It's a, uh, it's, it's a contract that we could renew, uh, if we would like to, but it, it's, there's a lot of volatility in this, in this market, in this space. So we believe it's important for our clients to procure it on an annual basis, just to make sure we're getting, uh, the most favorable rates, um, and, and design for our clients. So we did an RFP, we conducted that, RFP twenty dash, uh, seven seven, and I'm going to give you all some, some summaries and, and make a recommendation to you. Next slide. some, some summaries and, and make a recommendation to you. Next slide. We went to the, the stop-loss market. It's, as I mentioned, it's a very volatile market. Um, we went to nineteen different carriers. We were, uh, those carriers review your claim history. They review your risk, your demographics. They decide whether or not they wanna bid, and then they submit bids through the formal process. So the incumbent carrier is Berkshire Hathaway. Um, and then we received three bids, uh, from the market in addition to Berkshire Hathaway and their renewal. Next slide, please. Um, here is, uh, basically the, the detailed results of, um, of the findings. I wanna, uh, I'd like for, if you're looking at it on your screen, I'd like you to focus on, uh, the very bottom in blue. You'll see the, uh, monthly and total annual premium. That's one area I'd like you to focus on. Um, so you see that Berkshire Hathaway delivered a very significant, uh, renewal increase, uh, forty-seven percent, uh, because we do have, uh, a large, you know, some large claims that they're concerned about. We have a contract in place with them where they're not able to, and I'm gonna use the term laser, um, they are not able to laser out specific individuals at a different liability level. So in summary, your current liability is three hundred and seventy-five thousand. They don't have the ability to look at individual claimants and laser them out at a different level, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that. So they delivered, they do in their contract have the ability to, um, increase rates up to, uh, fifty percent, and they got, they got very close to that in their, um, in their renewal. They did offer us a, uh, an option to laser a specific individual at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, that, that's an ongoing claimant that we have and, and will continue to have. Um, and then they lowered the premium, uh, for, to be able to, to, to laser that individual. Um, the most competitive bid we have is Berkeley. Um, so Berkeley's coming in at about a fifteen percent increase, and they've also lasered that individual at five hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we do have some additional liability on one person, and we do have a more favorable premium increase than the, than the Berkshire Hathaway, uh, option. So that's gonna be my recommendation today. Birch, uh, Berkeley is a very, uh, you know, it's a, it's a A-rated carrier, uh, very, uh, stable, um, carrier. So that's gonna be my recommendation. Go to the next page. Um, you know, once again, a little bit about the process. Uh, we, we went out to bid, uh, and those bids were received on the twenty-seventh. Nineteen insurance carriers were, uh, approached. Uh, Berkeley's gonna be, you know, the best terms and conditions. Um, they do, even though they've lasered this one individual, we have a similar contract that we do currently with Berkshire Hathaway where, uh, they're, you know, putting in a rate cap contract where they can't laser new individuals moving forward. Um, so it's a, in, in, as far as in terms of conditions of the contract, it's very similar. Next page, please. Um, so we're, uh, I'm, I'm here to answer questions. I know certainly for, uh, you know, anybody that has questions, once again, I, I, we, we don't enjoy delivering renewal increases, but this is, this particular coverage, the stop-loss insurance, uh, it's a very hard market. So it's very similar to if you own a business or understand, uh, the risk management side, umbrella insurance is going up, auto, uh, property insurance, uh, stop-loss coverage is in a very similar, uh, situation right now as far as market conditions.
Uh, to make sure I'm understanding this right, especially for the new guys that hadn't been around the insurance, we're self-insured up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand bucks. So the city pays that. Anything over three seventy-five, the other, the insurance kicks in. But we have this one claimant that has a significant issue. So the city's gotta pay another two hundred thousand dollars to get from three seventy-five to five seventy-five. But this person, this, this being lasered out, over five seventy-five, the insurance kicks in, correct?
Yes, sir. And, and one comment, it's potential liability. We don't know for sure, um, that, you know, that individual would go, um, to the, to the laser amount, but it's potential liability in between three seventy-five and five seventy-five. Yes, sir.
And these, these have always been annual contracts?
They have, and, um, in twenty seventeen, Lance is hired as a new broker, and he's done a great job. And if you looked at the printout that was in our material, you could see back in twenty seventeen, uh, it was in the three hundred thousand range, and now we're in the six hundred thousand range. So my contention is not about Lance or what he's done. It's the process because we set the insurance rates and the plan that's gonna be offered back in October, and we stopped, we shot stop-loss for January. I've always thought that process needed to be put together. How can you budget for something when we didn't know we were gonna have this situation that's occurred? And, um, it's the process and not Lance or what's going on with this. I think with the insurance climate right now, and I've been doing this for thirty years, so it is a very volatile cli- uh, climate, but I truly believe, and I have believed since twenty seventeen, that you need to shop for stop-loss and shop for whatever you're gonna offer the employees for the year back in July or August to get ready for the October budget. And when I, I've questioned this every year, and I've told other cities to do this, you know, you're both businessmen, and I'm speaking especially to these new people that have just come on because they've not experienced this for the years that we have. And it's hard to shop when you don't know what you're gonna be facing in January. And now we're facing an extra three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we worked really hard to get this down. The healthcare budget was in the red when I came on, on city council, and we have saved millions of dollars in these years. And I just think we need to get this process together. It's a very main budget item in the city's budget. It's a very large figure. We need to have an insurance committee with people that are knowledgeable. That insurance committee needs to meet before all this is decided. The reason I was gonna vote against this today was because this insurance committee did not meet on the stop-loss. So I don't wanna delay this. I wanna make the motion to approve it, Lance, but I would like to see this process changed and done in a more timely manner with both the stop-loss and the employee benefit plan in August, no later than August.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
Uh, I've got a motion by Sellers, a second by Westbrook. Uh, any further discussion or question?
I don't have a question about the motion. Is there a, an insurance committee?
There is.
Okay.
But we did not meet.
Okay.
We got this information last Friday.
Okay.
I didn't feel that I could make a decision about this with the knowledge that I had today. And yesterday, I, I could not print this either, so I don't know if you guys printed it or saw it. He had to send it to me. There's just not enough time for me to make a knowledgeable decision about. But, you know, we can't delay the process. We've driven it down to the wire, and now we've gotta accept it, so.
Well, in my fears, if we delay it until December, that, that, that extra two hundred thousand-
It's not gonna go down.
It's not gonna go down. I tried.
Yes, sir.
But do you all understand it's hard to budget for something when you don't know what the cost is?
No, in, in my business, I give my health insurance in advance, then I let my employees know, then they make the decisions.
Right. And we did all that in October, but in October, we didn't know that we were gonna have that two hundred thousand dollar laser and another hundred thousand dollars in additional premium. And that's my reason for thinking it needs to be done at one time. Can't budget properly if you don't.
Linda, thank you for saving us money over the years.
Yes.
You've done good. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank y'all very much. Good to see y'all.
Davis Dixon, M. twelve.
Good morning. My name's Davis Dixon. I'm the Airport Manager at Tyler County International Airport.
Take that off.
You're not one of your fellow pieces of power. I figured that. Well, uh, as many of you've heard through the news, you know, with airlines over the past six to eight months with the COVID crisis, they've dealt with a number of challenges, and that includes Tyler. Uh, we've lost one of our carriers through this COVID nineteen, and American Airlines has also reduced flights early on in that, uh, that crisis. So in a lot of conversations with them, they've come to me and asked, uh, you know, for just a little bit of relief or maybe a waiver or deferment of some of their fees through this process. And what I'm seeing, I think with support, we'll probably see growth return to Tyler. In fact, we already have. So the details of this letter of agreement, I just wanted to summarize that what we're proposing is a waiver of their landing fees. And just so you know what landing fees are, every thousand pounds of aircraft that land on our runway, we charge seventy-five cents. So an average of one of the regional jets might be thirty-one dollars for each landing. And they're asking for that waiver or deferment from October first to December thirty-first. And what I wanted to be sure to have to you is a signed agreement before we came to you with this today. And I have that. So that would be a deferment or a waiver for the next three months, and it can be reviewed again at the end of December. Like, and the city council and Airport Advisory Board may want to reconsider this. Also, uh, a waiver of their office rent, which is thirty-seven hundred fifty dollars a month, which equates to eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, one stipulation that we put in this letter of agreement, that if they see, receive some sort of a CARES Act type of reimbursement, that, you know, what we're out of, that they could come back and reimburse them. So that's the reason I used deferment. That could happen. But, uh, other fees such as their common use fees, their utilities, those sort of things, those aren't being proposed to be waived in this letter of agreement. So this was presented to our Airport Advisory Board, and it was fully supported with a unanimous vote. So I wanted to bring that forward today, once I had that signed agreement. And also too, you'll notice that there were some outstanding fees that they, they were late to get to us early on in the process. We wanna make sure all that was sealed up first before we came today.
So didn't we receive some money on the, in the CARES Act for the airport?
We did.
How much was that?
It was over one point two million, and what that does is really cover our expenses. And I think it'll carry us depending how well things go up through, you know, the end of December into January. So here again, you know, I guess part of that letter of agreement, you look at that CARES Act that we've gotten, and it, and it does, it covers all, all of our operating expenses pretty much.
Well, this would show American that we, we care about their, their business.
You know, they're, we've gone through, I've, I've worked with them through nine eleven and two thousand one, and, you know, they've always been there. They've stayed with Tyler since I started in nineteen ninety-four, and I think it is kind of a good show of support. And, uh, you know, I don't wanna be certain with this, but next month I anticipate maybe even another flight. So we did go through kind of a, I guess, kind of a slump soon after that real major, uh, I guess, pushing the, uh, the virus came through. But I've seen a gradual increase, and the good thing is, is Tylerites and these Texans are really filling those aircraft too. So we're using a lot of precautions there on the airport with masks and hand sanitizers and things of that nature. So we can, we wanna ensure our customers feel safe.
Cool. And Davis, as we talked about at that Airport Advisory Board meeting, the reduction in funds you're gonna receive on American, you're picking it up in the CARES Act. So it's kind of a, it's a wash. It's not gonna affect your operations, your budget.
That's, that's the case.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Bill twelve.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, Davis.
Thank you.
Uh, now we're at the, uh, consent agenda. Does anything need to be pulled?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda passes. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Warren, Council. Uh, just a few items of note for the councils. Um, we did work with the Tyler Area Chamber Governmental Affairs Committee to draft the twenty-twenty-one legislative priorities for the state legislative session starting in January twenty-twenty-one. The focus of the chamber's community priorities are in healthcare, education, energy and economic development, general business, environmental quality, and transportation. We ensured there would be an emphasis on the need for broadband expansion and improvements, the development of a medical school in Tyler within the University of Texas system, and additional mental health resources in our area. One of the things as COVID nineteen has gone on and just the lack of activity downtown, we've seen kind of that void been filled in with homeless, uh, population and others that just sometimes, uh, people who have maybe mental health issues or concerns. And so the city and the county have been working together along with the downtown merchants to kind of address that. Uh, and Amber Verona, uh, facilitated a dialogue between the county and city leadership regarding the downtown homeless population recently, meaning allow for both entities to discuss current situations and discuss, and discussions on planning for the future, uh, to assist with our homeless population and finding other alternatives for them so that people feel a little more comfortable being downtown. Uh, Amber and Officer Johnny Green held a follow-up meeting with Salvation Army recently and Gateway to Hope to better familiarize and understand the resources which are available in the area, meaning allow for discussions on the action items from all organizations and establishing next steps in forming a collaboration of efforts between all. And then finally, uh, well, actually not finally, I got one more besides that. Uh, we do have a public house, a virtual open house. We've been doing quite a few of those recently, especially in relationship to federal grants, uh, that we have and the administration of those. The Tyler Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the NPO, uh, will be, is in an effort to improve bus service, uh, within the city of Tyler. Uh, the purpose of the open house is to gather input on how the bus routes can be improved. The virtual open houses will be held via Zoom. Uh, the first one will be on Thursday, November twelfth, with the second one being on Saturday, November fourteenth. And then finally, uh, Visit Tyler, uh, released their new Christmas ornament, um, that they will be selling this year. Um, you know, they recently, just in the past week or two, opened up the doors, uh, for our Visit Tyler offices downtown, um, in, uh, the Plaza Tower. And so with this, though, that, to kind of celebrate, they have a Christmas ornament, uh, that actually celebrates the Rose Garden. Um, and they'll be selling for ten dollars, uh, down there at their visitors' retail shop. And so it's never too early to get started, uh, shopping for Christmas. Uh, and so with that, uh, Mayor, back to you, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Ed. Do we still have an executive session?
Uh, no, sir.
We don't?
We can, well, we will, uh, the, the executive session will be pushed until December.
Great. So I guess we're done. First meeting with a brand-new council.
Wasn't this fun?
Welcome, welcome again. This, this has been great. It's good to have a full group.
Mr. Mayor, move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.